Are there reasons to rely on the community?
Who is gonna do the...
I will do, yeah.
Okay, please help me right now. The, I think that one's on the consent agenda.
You have one item on the agenda, the consent agenda, so July 11th, 2023 minutes.
Any questions, comment? Do you have a motion to increase by reference to the items listed within the consent agenda? Yeah, your package.
I'll say.
Um, any opposed? Questionary? Moving on to recognition, we have various special recognition meetings being held in our back.
First, I just want to thank the council for allowing me to give them the opportunity to open that file today. Um, we do have a bit more formal celebration with a lot more polished speech, you know, all that good stuff coming up at the end of the month, but I know not all council members will be able to leave. So, without further ado, um, the short and sweet one, I want to have. For those that don't know, Lyle has been a faithful and dedicated member of the Elon Police Department since October 1st, 1995. During his tenure, he served various roles, including patrol officer, effective patrol sergeant, patrol lieutenant, CID lieutenant, and as commander of operations and the administrative side of our division as assistant chief. During that tenure, um, Lyle has trained or mentored nearly every officer that's walked through our door in the Elon Police Department for nearly three decades. That just puts him in the spotlight, uh, myself included. I remember when I was promoted to, um, CID, Lyle was the one that took me under his wing and taught me the importance of detail and to be thorough. And I had a red pen, but I forgot to bring it. Uh, he was notorious for highlighting your mistakes in red and sending it back to you, uh, which offended some people, but it made you a better officer. It made you, uh, more in tune to the details that are required for a job. And that's what he has instilled in me, uh, over the years. And I'm sure he's regretting that, uh, instillment of high expectation. Um, but in addition to his public service for our town, Lyle has also remained active in the Navy Reserves as a chief petty officer, was deployed, I hope I get this right, four times to active duty. Uh, so he has, and his family has sacrificed a lot throughout his, his term here with the Elon Police Department, losing weekends and holidays, um, and then going overseas often to defend our country. Um, 28 years of service in total with the town and service to our community. He does retire from his post at the end of the month, October, uh, August, I'm extending you. August 31st of, um, this year, and he will leave a huge hole. Uh, and he's also one of the last of the old guard. Uh, I don't know what I'm gonna do. It's only two of us left, so. Uh, but anyway, uh, you deserve it. You deserve it. You earned it. I'm very proud of, of the service you've given, not only to the town, but for me over the last, uh, two years. So, congratulations.
Um, I want to thank you. I want to thank you, the council, for, um, my entire community who's here. You've been supportive of the police department. You've been supportive of every department in this town. You govern with common sense, um, making sure that the community, what's important, making sure that the employees here are what's important. It's been, these last couple of years, it's been pretty interesting, difficult times, um, but you, again, govern with common sense and with the people in mind. Uh, and as long as you do that, I think you can't go wrong. So, thank you for your leadership, uh, to the town and to the people. So, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And also, one last thing, please, do whatever you can. She's more than all of us, but she's insightful. Um, as the mayor said, and the president, founding member of the Kelly Black Club, and I say so with great pride. So, do whatever you have to do to keep her. She's navigated some treacherous waters. Her level of excellence, um, second to none. She does not sell for anything less. So, please keep her here as long as you can. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. All right, we have, oh, no. Public comments. We want to open up the public comment section. If there's an opportunity for residents, if there are, anyone, um, within the public round to share their concerns and wishes for the town, if you do wish to speak, and if you haven't already, if you want to raise your hand and we can get a statement up there. Right? So, we have Mick, well, that's because I'm sorry, Mick. Mick Fane. If you want to stand and say your name and your event, and then please share what you would like to share.
Um, my name is, um, wasn't it by Elizabeth?
Thank you for being here. Um, would you want to say your name again? And I'm sorry, I know you said that you didn't want to talk down this time that you were the only one, so. Yeah. Right? Isn't that everybody's special something? No, you mark it if you're here. You mark it. Any other public comments that we should be sharing with the town for this week? Any online?
Uh, nobody's indicating such.
Moving on to appointments, um, we are gonna start with our dev committee, that's our diversity, equity, and belonging committee.
I will. We received an application, uh, from Michael Woods, uh, on Ralston Drive to become a member of the Diversity Equity and Belonging Committee. In the packet, you have his, his resume, the application, uh, that he filled out, as well as a letter of interest in, uh, why he's looking to serve on that committee. And I will say, he came to our, our, the dev committee meeting yesterday morning, uh, and he provided some, some good insight and, uh, was a full participant in what they're trying to accomplish.
Okay. Mr. Woods, would you like to join us at the podium and just introduce yourself? I think we know you, but just.
Very excited about being a member of this board, and, um, think we can really look at some of the evidence that they did and bring out some good information about including them.
Any questions, Mr. Woods?
I just appreciate you volunteering. It's something where we've seen this, um, committee grow, when it's important that we didn't put some out there in the community and sort of that.
Right, and, wait a minute? All right, we are having a motion to appoint Michael Woods for the Diversity Equity and Belonging Committee. Hold on a second. All in favor, say aye. Um, any opposed? Questionary? Congratulations. Moving on to appointment for the public advisory commission.
If you may remember to the board, we didn't have a vote for the next one. The first one, we have this meeting is for the PTAC, the Public Transgender Advisory Commission for the city of Burlington, so we will have two representatives, um, from Elon. If you remember, it's your June 26th meeting, you appointed Ralph Howard to serve as the regular seat. Um, so we were excited to receive the application from Melissa McFane. When she previously served on the PTAC in the city of Burlington, between 2018 and 2019, when she was a resident of Burlington, but then she decided to leave Burlington and become the KIOT. Um, she's very passionate about public transportation and the best interest in it. Um, she's also participated in public input sessions about transit. Um, so we are excited to receive her application, and she is applying to fill the alternate position for PTAC for three years.
Any questions? Okay, my question, first one, um, any questions on this thing?
I appreciate you volunteering. Have you had an opportunity now that you've moved to Elon and this paper, to be alive, please, as you? You don't yet?
I'm usually a figure, so. Um, the, it's, it's work, actually work on campus here, but like somewhere out there, it's not lawful, it's like, awful. Huge, so we took, we took a ride and, uh, so, and I'm used to the law. But I'm, I'm just too much here.
And I appreciate that. I think that's probably a big missing. None of us participate or arrive. It's difficult for us sometimes to appreciate the, the challenges that you have and others have. Uh, I, I think your input's gonna be valuable to what you do going forward, with things that you have. Like maybe probably, maybe those that.
Um, it doesn't stop there, and they don't make stops. It stops over at most places. Um, but they, um, I did use it when I lived in Burlington, like a kid. Um, the campus, downtown Burlington to the library.
Thank you very much.
Reach out, please, Marido, to see where you live. Since we implemented, we had a request from Get In Place to add a stop. And Link is currently looking at adding a stop at no charge because it's already on the route, uh, which I didn't know, so it might, you know, to get something. That would work for you, but it.
Do you have a mission to do to the public, to add to the transit mission? Do you have a second? All in favor, say aye. Any?
Being ability, um, exciting, very small, but powerful little committee. We had four members originally, um, and one member, um, did resign, which she graduated from Elon University. Once again, we're super excited to get Chloe's application. Um, Chloe Stewart, she's a rising senior at Elon University. Chloe needs to go back to here, so. She's continuing that capacity for radio, because they probably want. Um, our last student participant was also a senior. We had a very short term, but such knowledge that they contribute as students and the perspective from the university. Um, Chloe is studying environmental and ecological studies at Elon University. Um, she has experience with facilitating environmental policy, they discuss discussions. Um, she's also been very active, um, in the university's, um, sustainability program, um, and so will have insight into the university's sustainability master plan. Um, so we were excited to receive her application. Um, if appointed, she would be filling the vacant term or the term of vacant by Emerson Well, which expires in December 2024, but again, we could extend and continue her education. All I have for Chloe. Chloe's here tonight, so as I keep looking at it, yeah.
But can you just stand and, you know, any questions for Chloe?
So, she can be filled in the term, this by 2024.
Right.
Twenty.
Twenty twenty five.
Twenty people, right, twenty four, so, we're ready to do that.
We can, yeah.
He's maybe capable of staggering to the tree.
Do you have a question? Hold on a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any? Um, moving on, we do not have any other opinions this evening, so we will go to old business and, uh, first. Yeah, if you don't, if you don't hear flash.
Everybody, and, um, excited to discuss our town flag at our, uh, meeting on June 26th. Some discussion on which direction to go, and, uh, the overall consensus was to go with our, uh, newer logo, which is seen front of you on the wall there, um, on the green background, and I asked. Just a life-size flag, so that's what it would actually look like. So, if you all take a moment and just look, look at that, it's probably look better than what you can see on the screen. And, um, I'm requesting that you review this, decide if that's the direction you wanna go, and, uh, approve that, so we can move forward with putting any town flag.
Distance.
Need this? Maybe on the organs of the regulations, and I think that need to amend our social district.
There are some copies floating around, but.
Um, so, um, I'm happy to think you've had our social district now since February. This is a little off topic, but, uh, it, it's been a really honest experience so far, and I hope you all feel the same way. And back when we discussed it in February, uh, we originally wanted to include the, uh, Elon Community Church's property in our scope and on the map. The original intent was for this to happen, but at that time, uh, we, we had not gone through the approval process for the church. We were still in discussion and, uh, bringing it. So, we voted to move forward with it, excluding the church property of it. But now I'm happy to report to you that a letter of agreement has been drafted by our town attorney, and it was approved and signed by Elon Community Church. But you have a copy. The staff was recommending that the council vote to authorize the town manager to enter into the social district agreement with the Elon Community Church, um, designating this portion that you can see on your map there, um, as a part of our social district property, it's 41.6 feet. And, uh, Randy, I'm not sure if this is what we had talked about, which is, you know, that middle oak tree off the grass. It was real technical at that time, so it's actually been, uh, measured out. That would, that's basically how we get this from what used to be the state sidewalk property line.
So.
Oh, great, wonderful. I was hoping I didn't go out on an actual, what? Uh, for the good mind, the council should ask you to amend our social district coordinates by adopting the new number that you have in front of you at the map, the attached group. If you look at the yellow area that is church property, it's not complete scale, but it kind of shows you, you will have a more definitive map that would be out to the public. So, my, my request to you as staff is to go to enter to a agreement with Elon Community Church to allow this portion of the property to be included in our social district at this time, and to amend the social district boundaries, um, to include that church property.
Obviously, the, the design of, or the plaza now, does that include the property at all? Was, is it potentially left, so it didn't go into that 41.1 line?
The plaza is, uh, is all on our property, however, the sidewalk that will be relocated is actually on church property, which is closer to the lightest. But the plaza itself will be all on our property.
And I assume it will be the town's responsibility to maintain that property. Just reach down there. Only if it's on your.
Only on our property. Right now, um, the three oak trees that are closest to the plaza, and some of those are kind of half and half.
I mean, the, the surveys show that the trees along West College are in the right of way, right on the line.
Yes.
But, but it was in the right of way. Um, as you move out, they become church trees.
Which currently the university maintains, correct?
No, the church and, and the town, because, because some of it overhangs on town property, so it probably works well. But they do on the street side, and there's any other trimming you do.
It's kind of what it's.
But you don't have to, because I think it's all right.
And, and I will say, the big oak tree is under evaluation right now. There's a lot of concern about its health. Um, so we're, we're getting someone to take a look at it, uh.
We started with two, uh, different.
Well, that, that would be, that's, well, so that's, that's why we're, we're doing, getting somebody else, so we have a, a good idea of whether that tree is viable. We're hoping it is.
Yeah.
Because we don't want to see it take, come down, but.
We'd be also welcome to see.
We would put additional signage where that extension goes, so the public would know during an event, you know, this is where I'm in the district, if I go closer to the, you know, to the church building and stair area, but that is not a part of this.
And there's, there's, uh, neat or fancy around that point. Basically, it covers an area where we're going to the picnic tables. And we have a, a, we have some church, the church had donated some picnic tables in the town. They've just been a shared place, and I think we're gonna sit there anyway. So, it's not like, why should we, you know, try and get people on a ticket, so. And, uh, the church has allowed, uh, events with beer, I know that's all the. So, and then we've come into an agreement with the insurance companies. Just so that's gonna be covered. It all seems to work out.
I would just like to share some feedback that I've got, you know, some of the statements everyone will. And originally, they talked about it would be all kinds of out for, or just beer and wine, you all agree, you felt most comfortable with beer and wine. And the feedback I'm getting from the marketing teams, they actually like it that way. That it's easier for them to propose, because I asked them, you, would you like to eventually move into other kind of options? They still didn't, we, we wanted to get there. They feel they're in control of more with the cuts going out, and just feel, uh, with the time, with the, how they, they, they really actually like it that way. So, I just wanted to share that.
And this extension is gonna follow the same hour?
Yes. It'll just help us, because we must already call this long today during events.
They're not gonna profit from it. It's just, I think it's just a matter of, um, just being a part of the community and that's significant green space. And so, we're just trying to investigate, okay, because we'll have it done some. And things, or sometimes, that people, uh, attempt. And, uh, the, the school will be using it sometimes in time, like. So, it's just, it's just more, it's not about making money.
Any other questions? Do you, I have a question to the group. So, have a second?
I'll sort of.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. All right, moving on, we have, um, clear point before by the amendment number one. It has a comment that play part to action.
I think the tide has set it off. And it is a, is a grant that Phyllis had applied for, and she received this grant, and it is for $30,000 to help the town aid in that project. And so, I'm seeing that the board approved the $30,000, and. Well, it will eventually go out.
And there's obviously doubt as to whether this greenway will ever come about due to some of the departments in the railroad. We're still working through all that, um, absent that project, that $30,000 can be applied to another recreation project. So, it just won't have to go back to impact elements, uh, we'll be able to work with them on that.
But just to be clear, we're approving just the, the receiving, because we don't have an outlook yet, for sure. Is there a timeline for that grant?
It is a timeline, but I'm not sure how they would adhere to it because timeline, and I was reading that it's, um, September 30th, 2023. But I don't know how Phyllis is going to apply that, approach that, um. I haven't had any communication with her on this, just here's the link.
I mean, they don't have government all the time. They brought to me that nothing.
Absolutely, but see, the grant wasn't, wasn't issued until, until this fiscal year. So, that's a little bit time. The receipt, uh, but I'm reading here that still, what she applied at the end of, what she applied is, I'm looking at it, it's October 1st, 2022 to September 30th, 2023.
When, when I had met with Phyllis, that's, that, that's the grant year that, in fact, I'm not, works on through the end of September, uh, which obviously doesn't match our fiscal years. And so, they were coming up at, at that point when they said, we have money left over, so they, and it gave them, gave us the grant. I don't think that is a hard and fast deadline, that the money be expended. And if, if we need notified, then we're gonna take long on that. Again, they said, we, we don't take money back. So, every indication is that, you know, this is a, I won't say flexible, but it's a cooperative effort on their part with us. So, I, I don't see an issue with, if this goes till next spring even, um, before we can, if we, if we get to resolution on this project or apply elsewhere.
So, what, what do you expect as far as railroad approval of the agreement?
Uh, well, before we do that, we've asked Josh, our, our engineer, to take a quick look at the requirements that the railroad has placed on us. Uh, well, before we do that, we've asked Josh, our engineer, to take a quick look at the requirements that the railroad has placed on us. This had started as a kind of woods trail green. Uh, the mountain sea trail folks who come out, walked it, loved the idea. They were actually going to go and construct the trail, which would be bringing in some ground cover to, you know, keep it, make it look like a trail. Working around the trees, taking out some of the low brush, clearing the woods trail. Railroad is coming back and said, we'd be all all. We we can see approving this project. There's only a couple of things you would need to do. One is have it fully engineered. Full drainage and has to be a ten foot wide paved pathway. Which sounds bad enough, but in order to put down a ten foot wide paved pathway, you need to have about a thirty foot swath cut through the woods. Uh, to get equipment in there and do all that kind of work. My concern is that this volunteer led effort to build this inexpensive pathway that the thirty thousand go to pay for the fencing along the railroad. Uh, is going to turn into a multi hundred thousand dollar project, paving project that. We obviously haven't talked about as far as our capital budget, capital priorities or anything else. So. We've asked, we've asked Josh to give us some. We've asked Josh for to to work up a proposal.
We could use that for the engineering calls.
The grant money was was given for the fencing. Yeah.
Then I read it said that not used for that.
We can apply it to a different project, yes. So if we're not going to build the greenway, we can apply that thirty thousand toward another project. It. Things happen quickly sometimes with impact on that said, hey, send us a letter, we'll send you the money, kind of a thing. I mean, this is, this is a major project that none of us had anticipated or thought of funding, so. You know, it's 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 not a definite in my mind.
What is the most length of that trail?
It's about sixteen hundred feet from the end of ballpark out to university.
And are you saying there was no chance of the road backing down on that?
It's, I will say, it's it's their land. Um, you know, we're we'd have to pay the lease payments on it every year, uh, like we do with stuff on Lebanon. I, they are, they seem to seem pretty self assured that those are the things that they want to do and sure were going to happen. Which is like said, one hundred eighty degrees, what we were anticipating and thinking of. And only, you know, fifteen years, we'd have enough money, but the price should go up.
Moving on to fiscal year budget amendment number two.
How hard your. It's a difficult. Get some deal responded. They had a crew fight fire. Found the victim. And he was fine, was able to come down the ladder escorted on power, but they were able to rescue. What we are here to propose tonight is something that's been in the works for I got here. Um, the fire department's been shopping for more comprehensive records management system. We found what we wanted last fall. And Alman's County also liked it, the Fire Department office liked it, several fire departments liked it. And so the fire chiefs got together. We discussed doing that as a countywide project. The county was looking to actually fund this. By the time we got to a point where we were able to make a decision on it, so the fire department dropped out. Uh, by June. We are proposing to still move forward with this record management software. It contains everything that we need to keep records for from. Our incident reports, our pre-plans, our hydrants, our investigation. Also, there's billing with permits, or a new inspection program that will be implemented this year. Uh, there will be all in one when my staff comes in, they'll have one place to do all their reports. It also allows us to share data with our neighboring departments, because Gilford County has one of the system, gets a bill on the system. Burlington has one of the system, and so they're allowing the sharing program. It'll be a one time, first first year cost of nine thousand five hundred twelve dollars. Um, that'll come in and import all of that on this. Also train us. Moving forward, it will be a yearly cost of five thousand five hundred. So right now we are working. The state system, the state system allows us to use that. Free, however, just to give you an example. One, we can't keep all the records on it, this is mostly for incident reporting and our train records. In order to generate a specific report, if I wanted to pull up. In the county project and sort of the timeframe. We will put their request in and we put such requests in last August. Did not get to be able to generate that report to that. So we would like that to be.
Then we're going to be inputting your portable by answer it?
Yes.
Other questions?
So even if we waited next year to see if the county decides to. So like I just.
I don't think that that the countywide thing is probably not. There were so many. Potentially it's for the fire one bucks to build the fire. The reason, one, we'd like to start being able to produce data, you know, as quickly as possible. But also, um, they are allowing us right now the group pricing that they propose to the county. Even though the county didn't go to it, if you still want to go to it, they're going to give that price.
They walk in and take.
No, it'll be, it'll be.
Talking to the other communities that have done it, I'm just trying to base it to say. That, you know, having to fill out reports, then being able to do other things that you're going to do.
Well, it it'll actually speak to them. One, kind of one place to do the information. But also, this is going to link to Alman's town one. And so any data that they get, initial call, it's all about.
So even if the county. Was going to do this group, this is what we see with it.
And the reason we can both get a story here. Potentially get an offer. Um, what about train, is really ongoing trainings?
Well, I think, you know, initially they're going to come in and train. I think moving forward. That's supposed to be, would be a base for them.
Other than some, we're talking about.
Um, with our shopping around, this wasn't. The cheapest, but the ones that were the most expensive. It ranged from thirty nine hundred up near to nine thousand some odd dollars a year. And this was kind of nowhere, but. Really covered.
And compatible former neighborhood.
Compliments. Fiscal year twenty four budget number two for fire protection.
Right, um, as. Didn't you just call my name? I heard Rich. Retro, I know, I heard Rich. I was just going to roll with it.
No. Hope you didn't come just because you enjoyed being here. We're going to leave the whole. You're now. Very hard and. Not available if we come. They will have two trucks in the back.
I think it's important to do the thing about how the initial threat. Knowing that there's. That TV neighbors. I mean, no, they're not going to be coming there, but they'll be. You know, it's just, you know. You know, fixing what we have.
Thank you. At least these. That's good. The number nine is. Probably. Thirty seven pound for the future. It's right here, we can probably get a. As far as everything else, mention to the mission. Quality service. We, however. These are these good.
I think it's really important that we saw them, we talked going down, especially my neighbors.
We're speaking up, David.
Of course, my neighbors, um, you know, it's it's a service that they really count on, and it's a service that I can do on provide unlike any other town in our area. I have friends that live in other communities and they're drawn and they're always amazed at how much work and and how quickly. Um, our ways are pitched up, um, were spoiled. So I think this is something that our citizens have an expectation that we know. Um, so I I support what we can do.
So besides the big problem. Is there a other vehicle or another. Permanent issue that they.
Reach the phone calls with their bases.
If you don't mind me interrupting, I think Michelle, that she's here and she works from front, she can also testify about the number of people that have called. And so. For thirty seven thousand and easily have the backup. First and two, also, not so much backup, but also it could be implemented twice, you know, I mean, we can put them both out there, start working on both.
And I don't know what I feel, anybody. Of the community by any means. We try to get every location and what's we. Official team. When we have a bad day. This will allow us to do that. So it won't be. There's other communities too. They have three stops on. You get any place to sit there and. Where he works. Yeah, they wouldn't have a speed down.
I've driven through Burlington where you have to drive in the middle of the road because the shoulders are filled with leaves. I I'm at Burlington, Vermont. I, I'm at Burlington, Vermont.
We only have one devious guy that we have, uh. Not getting the CD that everyone else at the work with eleven out of twelve. Capable of doing the other. He's in the property.
And you know, I'm not sure if he made it, but our public works department, they are all trained on all jobs. So it's not like only David does this and we don't, he does that. Only this person there's that. They're all trained.
Let's give one, we cross train with everyone who's in. Uh. So you have a. Somebody that feel in, I mean, I just have personally have said. And maybe. People like there still take back the clock. Got things on the way to do us missing the night, it bothered.
I'll say in your experience, speaks for itself, I tell you. Appreciate your feedback.
Well, for cost, I mean, you've got the. Not just. No, it's going to be updated for your system. It's been.
Okay, you don't have a nation to approve this year twenty four budget number three. I hear out there is going to be a retro pick. Here's a type of. Twenty thirteen. All the favors they have. Any opposed?
They're the first to vote.
All right, so like this one is. I mean, then when I was more zero. It's looking at twenty four budget minute number four for.
What I'm reading. Yeah. Uh, so for, for those of you who have lived in town for the last fifteen or twenty years, this is probably a project you talked about more than once or heard about more than once. Um, we have now two, three years back when we first we knew we're getting ARPA money, we, we went ahead and we, we throw with the design process to get this project designed for construction. Um, we were fortunate, we FY twenty three state budget that uh, they appropriated two point four million dollars to the town of Elon for this project. Based on our estimate at the time. Um, that's, that's the good news. The, the rest of the news is that when we went out to bid this past spring and they opened up the bids. Uh, our, the low bid was two point seven nine six million and sixty nine cents. Um, it's about four hundred thousand dollars over our estimate. You've got the correspondence from Ali Williams that the bids were all good. This was certified as a low bid. Uh, their recommendation that was, we did, we go with. Uh, I think the next lowest bid was three point eight or something like that. So it's a significant difference. I would say the only person who was sad about this bid was the, were the folks from Pipeline Utilities, because they thought they left about a million two on the table with their low bid. Um, so, uh, you know, I think it's a good price. It's obviously more than we had budgeted for. Uh, so along with the contingency, uh, would bring the, the construction project total to about two point nine. And, um, if the board would like to move forward with this project. You'll have the opportunity, next, next section on the agenda actually approved the bid. Um, but this will give you the money to approve the bid if you choose to do so. So we're looking at requesting a budget amendment for five hundred thousand dollars from, uh, fund balance. Cover the balance of the construction costs. And any contingency, uh, at least we hope any contingency. So that's what the items for.
And part. Or, or don't want to put into fund balance to replace revenue loss.
So we've already spent all the ARPA money. But this is, so we, we spent it. We allocated all of our ARPA money to our previous expenses. So that project is, you know, been submitted and being closed out at federal level. The three point nine that we received is now in our fund balance. Uh, for presumably for these types of capital projects.
So one question I had, honestly, and I was kind of surprised, not surprised by the increase, but with the, the variation in the bids. How did you go over one of three thousand in contingency? What is that based on?
Um, my guess, I, Ali Williams recommended it, so then they actually came up with it. My guess is that after going through all the line items within the budget, using their knowledge of what's underground, they ran it up to half a million dollars. If you look at hundred three thousand dollars and thirty one cents. So I, I don't think there's any magic to that number particularly. Roughly five percent of the cost. Um, that's the other aspect that we contribute is usually a percentage. It's not based on anything particular.
And you're based on a. Obviously, the longer you wait. Sure, the cost.
The cost or the cost at this point?
The cost is zero, maybe it'll be pretty.
Oh, have we waited a year? Yes.
Part of this. Huge part in what may that get worse in the future. If not approved. Yes. In the. In the era we're in right now. The dog's line fight. Really, really tough to get.
Yeah, and that was my point, that I think they'll read, they've got to do this. Yeah. Honestly, I think this has played on.
The hundred and three, it would not, I mean, they, they'd given us a price. So if we prove that bit, that they're going to charge us. And if the price on the, like, the pipe goes up, they eat that, they don't pass that along. If they run into the ledge underneath the road and require blasting, that's unknown. That's where the contingency would come in.
Right. But I guess my point is, is your bid based on starting next spring or starting when? When, when is your, your starting point where they can guarantee those prices?
Um, now, essentially. I mean, if we put, if we didn't vote on this until spring, yeah, they would want to go back and look at numbers. We're within the window of, of the bid that they've given us. We told them what the deadlines, you know, what the schedule was for you. And there's, yeah, that's fine, you know, as long as we're getting a vote or a decision, you know, tonight, they're not worried about any of that. Um, it's likely that, I mean, they're going to have a four or five month window before they get material delivered anyway. Well, that's the other thing is that. I mean, there's a delay before you actually start to see pipes showing up.
Wow, we got a, what's, what? I know we got a.
It, it, it's an old, undersized line.
And it's feeding all the way to Hager, like all the higher.
Yep.
The new dorms on the corner. Are they going to be feeding from this line or are they going to be feeding from the? Like.
I think their connection was in the Hager, correct?
That's feeding through that line, usually.
Yeah.
And then the individual quad is also feeding in Hager.
I, yeah. The, the building, the engineering building they just finished, I think that comes in off the backside.
That comes, you know, uh. Comes in off the whole.
It comes from Hager?
I don't know.
Or is there?
Well, then it goes through. Do okay. And then everyone's going to go up. So it's making. And then there's the image.
And, and remember, unlike sewer lines, water lines are looped, so they feed in. I mean, every, any one point is getting water from different directions at different times. So we had a twelve inch on one side of O'Kelly, we got a six inch that we want to replace. Depending on what happens in the future in that area. Uh, if, if the university goes above two or three floors, there becomes, there's a, there's a potential beat of issues with fire flow and, and water pressure. Working off a six inch. Mm-hmm.
But water line can withstand what that right now. More.
Or if they go any higher. Yeah.
Was there anything special with the university was trying to help with the project? I know we got the offer of this is great.
I had conversations with the university early on about this and uh, the, the sentiment was that, uh. The impact to the university leaving it a six inch was such that they didn't necessarily feel that that was their priority to have this line upgraded. They could manage with a, a smaller size. That they'd be happy to work on other projects versus this one. Um, so thi- this is a standalone project for the town. And I said, you know, we got the two point four from the state for it. So, you know. It, it. Half a million dollars at this point is a lot of money. It's a lot less than two point nine.
I'm, I'm sorry. Conversation. It's. It didn't go up. I would think that.
Yeah.
You guys know what it is now. It's not going to be. Yeah.
And we got the money. Not money.
Instead, we're going to do our. That was going to go underground, knew that that's where it was heading. And that it was going to get it to us. That's why I said, I was like, we're ready.
Hopefully, they'll take what's safe. By the time you get the phone, it's easy. That's, that's bad. For. You know, that's the. Anybody gets that might. You know, you know, my area, third view of that. I think it's a moment. What you're about to do is. The one you land is, I mean, the chief would be real head there, but.
Other questions? You have a motion to approve budget number. Um, David say I? Any opposed? There's a time to meet.
Okay, uh, in your packet, you have the, uh. I won't go back through the history of the project. Uh, but you have the bid award information, the list of bidders, the pricing that they gave us and, uh. Engineers letter of recommendation that we, uh, give the award to, um, Pipeline Utilities. Their, their price is, was by far less than the other bidders. And, um. The, Ali Williams has seen that their work before and it has a lot of confidence in them.
That's what I was looking at, whatever, just in the, in the, the, but it seemed like it was reasonable. Well, we went to a little bitter, but. To make sure it's something that's reasonable.
Yeah.
You'll have to actually use a more of a. Oh, and they were saying I. Any advice? All right, living on, uh, whether the determination on August twenty eighth, twenty twenty.
Uh, no real information attached to it. We've, we've talked whether we're going to have that meeting or not going to have that meeting and it's, we're now, you know, three weeks out. In past meetings, when we talked about. No, we also talked about August with folks vacation schedules. And whether we're going to ultimately meet or not, we said it wasn't, we didn't need to talk about it. Then, so.
I won't be present.
I won't be. We did, I. And I'm fine, it was just an open question, that's what owners have put it on.
Have you got a lot on the document or something?
Nothing yet, no, nothing yet.
People are confused. Who is.
Um. Whoever. I mean. Ultimately, what happens, I, I'll just, somebody take my role and we have somebody else to, to, you know, do this or somebody is com- competent enough that they can do both, that's fine. You, I mean, it's not taking a lot of my time to, to manage this of all of our doing presentations and stuff like that, which is the, the complicated part.
But it's a summer month, we're in that, this is. I'm not sure why, it doesn't smell or doesn't. Really wrong. Since this is the. I feel really bad, are you concerned that citizens don't feel like they're meeting them?
I mean, I'm fine with giving nothing in the plan and that's not facing everything out. I think in. And all your. And we're. That's my kind of. But if there's truly nothing that's getting pushed out, then.
Let's see, we have a couple of items that will be coming the first week in September. Um, through the planning board, uh, so they'll be meeting in August for September. Meeting?
Yeah.
Oh, that's got bumped now.
Planning board's not meeting in August, we're actually having a different meeting this time.
Okay.
Planning board will be having a joint meeting with you at your first September meeting for the Hyrter corridor plan. That would be.
Yeah.
So then anything. Is there any?
Um. Let's see, if that one's going to get bumped, we had, we actually bumped one of them up to tonight, that was, um, the appointment to sustainability committee said can come off. Uh, Phyllis will have, um. Work product for the skate park committee. Uh, folks to, for that, uh, as well as kind of a draft work plan, which one we need to look at. Uh, we were notified that the, uh. I guess the county or maybe AVSS has increased the, um, budget for SRO from seventy to seventy five. Be a budget amendment to accept the additional funding, um, for that. That's all I've got. And then the, the joint meeting with the corridor plan, um, so that's all that's on the agenda for that September twelfth meeting. And none of that will be ready other than the budget amendment, which could be ready for August.
The one, one item.
I don't think you do necessarily, um. It will, if, if that's because if you can vote, that's fine, you don't want to.
Any.
No.
What is your?
Yeah, I'm, I'm. There'll be times where you're. I'm just very just supportive of. In here. Just think, we'll put those dates out there. They should be. Yes.
Nobody objected a month ago when I told you.
Retirees, they're due to evidence, one dollar, provided that that officer has dedicated a fairly lengthy service to the agency. The Elon Police Department is taking part in this tradition for as long as I remember, the last eighteen years we've done. The facts surrounding this, again, best to do it well is retirement, he is retiring after twenty-eight years of loyal service and as a token of our appreciation and with that tradition, I would ask you guys to vote to approve the sale of his duty weapon to him for one dollar. The handgun will be presented to him at his retirement ceremony on August thirty-first. The firearm in question is a Glock Model forty-five nine millimeter handgun, bearing the serial number B L X V nine six seven, and it's valued at approximately fifty dollars. The gifting of the handgun would not impact our firearm surplus technically, in order to pay the place that we keep a number of spares and So I'm asking you all to vote, will I be to sell the gun to two wives for one dollar in honor of his return? Let's see, include voting to approve the sale at a fair market value, which we can have a praise a local firearms dealer, or you can vote against selling the gun altogether.
Any other questions?
There is no vote on this, this is just a presentation to you to make sure you're aware.
But the rant It's hard, the way they have us set up. This is what we can do. It'll, it'll price it down by tax. That's gonna come to you like this condition. Any questions?
The three twenty-six meeting, you guys, bring your handbook for some the pros, changes. We updated the wording to that, changed the name to this page, anyway, so when it includes that financial link, it We change page returning, returning link to page.
I was remiss because I was supposed to get your attention at the start of the meeting so we can introduce new employee.
So I'm pretty loud, I can talk from the back. So while you're losing one Michigander in twenty-three days, you've gained a new one. Funny, small talk between the Michiganders. Jenna is a native of the Lansing area of Michigan. She got her undergraduate degree up in Michigan and then decided on a whim to come down to the great state of North Carolina with her sister. She got a double master's degree from UNC Wilmington in environmental policy and public administration, and she started with our department on July the tenth as a planner one. She has been thrown right into the weeds with some fence permits, some fence violations, lots and lots of site plan review, and I think she is a perfect fit for our department and for our little town hall family. So she's gonna do great things. Peterson, Jenna Peterson, she's the Jenna, I was introducing her, I'm like, what's your last name? Jenna Peterson, she probably will not be presenting to you in the next month or two, but give her time, she's getting a lot of exposure. She did do an internship in New Hanover County Planting Department for about a year. Look forward to her working with y'all, if you have any questions or need assistance, please, so it has a pay to reach out to either one of us. She did, she contributed on part of that master's degree, so yes. And she recruited Chloe, she reached out to university and got us an application, so yes, I'm excited.
So in addition to a new employee, Cars and Coffee is back, starts this coming Saturday morning. Eight to ten, it'll be in the parking lot of the community church off of Holt. Good classic cars and good coffee. Movie on the lawn, our next one is Friday, August eighteenth, movie is Uncharted. Movie is free, as is the popcorn and the drinks. Two nights from now, Thursday night on August tenth, five thirty, there'll be a virtual community meeting on the Haggard Corridor Studies that are wrapping up. There's login information on our website, if people want to do it from home, they can come here, we'll set it up here to log in as well. Consultancy will be remote. And it'll be to go over the final draft before it comes to you folks. Elon's Farmers Market is still going strong, there's a good turnout every week. It's last week with the heat and the threatening rain, the numbers of vendors was down a little bit, but I suspect this week what looks good, they'll be back, and again, that's at the community church. And the last piece of the big news is construction has started on our downtown plaza. They, they broke ground last Tuesday, I believe. And they have some new materials spread out, and we were down there this morning. The, and for background, the project began with a COVID-induced idea of turning a street into temporary dining was successful, and we're turning, turning into a permanent place for outdoor dining events, music, what have you. And so later this fall, I think the deadline is right around the end of November for construction, the orange barricades will come down off of West College finally. And we'll have a new pedestrian plaza, a nice looking design. It'll be an attractive venue for all sorts of things going forward, I know Jill's putting together some plans for new stuff to happen out that way. And it'll also, you know, for ongoing dining in the, in the community. Early move-in is the seventeenth, there's about three hundred freshmen are moving in. The rest of the freshmen come on the eight, Friday the eighteenth, and then the rest of students, but it started on Saturday.
Will we be announcing that during our residence?
I thought we had, yes, we will put in.
Will we be street blockages before?
Ah, yes. East Haggard from Williamson to Oakley will be accessed to university only off of Williamson. No through traffic from the Oakley Inn. Couple of, so there'll be detours to get people around downtown to get to that right spot for entry. That's the only formal closure that I recall, don't pick any other states of the world going one way. Lebanon's one way. Yeah, we'll get that out. I mean, and Thursday's kind of a buy, application only move-in, that's why there's so few students who are actually doing it.
I want to just say a few words about Sustainability Committee, they've been not through the summer, we didn't take off one month, but this last month, we're moving much closer to coming up with a, with a priority plan, and you'll be hearing more about that. And again, we want more people, we're still working to recruit. I don't have much other than there, other than saying we want to be as church, we want to be good neighbors, I think that's Other than that, I have nothing, nothing, I think it's been a good summer. I'm really, I'm just really excited about sustainability, the conversations that are we had a conversation with the university of their plan. We're also realizing that there's other organizations that may or may not be a part of our significant, we have areas that don't pay, that are not part of our tax system, but we also have redesigner and so we're, we're kind of And I just, I'm just thankful that we had this recognition of this wonderful officer, with this really, you know sense that he, you know, people like that can give that much time to we could easily be a revolve.
You know, to really range it out, I think we've been blessed to have all the officers that he's been able to, to mentor, it's been, it's a trip test, which in wild, we're going to save his towns and state, so we should be all proud of been on vacations on back, I'm trying to think of so that, that group's progressing well, I think we get some good feedback. There's some surveys out there, they already just sent those out to just pay in, as well as the EG and you know, people, people like to play, but we're getting a lot of, being appreciative feedback. Hopefully it can help us to make Elon a safer place to be for a pedestrian standpoint. The roads that we keep talking about, I'll pay some money, and if we don't give our feedback to the, to the state, then nothing will happen. The courage of the voice, speak up, and appreciate our work that we've done this summer. I think fortunately, we had no major weather disaster fees yet. But I've been going through it, and I'm looking forward to our university, students getting back on the grind, I think that's what there's the, a new, a new season, new bodies coming in, you know, new people, we have to be patient and understanding. I'm looking forward to having students back.
Just to add, earlier, pre-cave assistant chief's handles. His dedication, twenty-eight years, a long time. His dedication, twenty-eight years along on, sounds like we've been, he was just, we'll miss him quite a bit. Just remembering that, and welcome to, I mean, I'm happy to have you.
Thank you everybody, Mr. Annabelle, I mean, he was always one of the first, and I can reach out to him to ask a question, he would always answer, he's been forward. Really appreciate it. I remember one, one time he came here and he said he had the opportunity to leave. And he actually moved here, and well. And that just really stuck with me, that's how I want everybody to do, and so the fact that Elon touched somebody that much was very, very impressive. Monty and I went to, we have a new business, and Gregor, that, it's a basic, et cetera, by Cindy. It's a woman who, that already owned business, so that's what we're, but it was getting me to think, we had a lot of women, women ran businesses, and people on. And so that's just pretty awesome that that happened. Other than that, I look forward to the continuation of the performers market, I know it's a little bit of an obstacle, right there on the corner, but I know it's gonna be a good time once we have it, so hopefully Christmas. Right, like we're gonna do our tree, and afternoon, and all that stuff, and.
I don't have much to say, except that it was really nice to see all the different departments here, you know, I think in how privileged I am. To be a member of this community for twenty-four years, and then just the, on the council, to be honored, to have such an amazing staff, is, it's just such a pleasure, because. You know, sometimes we think, oh, that just gets down, but when you see all the hard work that's behind it, I'm like, it reminds you how lucky you are.
Let's see here, so it's a great time to have a year off sale on a good weekend, I'm just gonna share that with anyone who. You wanna make money on a year off sale, have a good weekend, trust me. And so we are all taking a community cleanup, and the same time, as far as some coffee, and it's my bad, because I can't realize they were both at the exact same time. But it gives an opportunity for people who are coming, or for the cleanup, to maybe go in for some coffee. So we're gonna take a look at who has signed up to participate on Saturday morning, we're gonna do an eight to ten to try to beat the heat. Since there are a lot of young kids, we do try to keep it kind of in the safer areas of town. But Rich and I have talked a little bit about, you know, some of the areas where we need to go and do some litter cleanup. So there are some areas that are not going to be named for young, so think University Drive, West Road. You know, even part of like Eat Tiger, maybe, you know, there are some areas that we do need to try to, or try and community cleanup, but. Maybe a plan for COT and for the, somehow they're handed off, because especially West Road, you know, I know that university gets like the worst reputation, but like. West Road, you cannot walk all of that out, I mean, you are either in a ditch, like down below the road, or you're in the road, and people rich out of. Hurrying, so we need to figure out something, because those are definitely. I've been gone a lot, so I know I'm missing the meetings, but for me, if I'm not in downtown every day, that's a big deal for me. So it feels really good to be downtown almost every day again, I've been able to, Patrick and some other community workers that. Kind of have opportunities to perform. I'll be celebrating tomorrow, maybe this month. You really should.
I'm very proud of you guys.